6:30.
Great, thank you. Kevin? You good? Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Bella Vista. If you would please join us and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
Wilms?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll move into citizen input. Alice Smith, as council mentioned, you have three minutes. And the city clerk?
Hi, I'm actually here for a hearing on a bill that the city sent me for cleaning up leaves in the ditch. Now supposedly they cleaned up the whole ditch, but I had already done half of it. And the bill they submitted to me was one culvert clean out for $330. Attached to this is, let's see, a postage fee for $22.05. They had sent me one letter, possibly two more, one of them was certified, but it didn't come to $22. Anyway, since I had already cleaned out half of the culvert, I felt that I shouldn't have to pay the $330. And quite frankly, I'd like to see some documentation on how much they actually did pay the person who cleaned out the culvert. Because I'm sure that none of you, if you fill out an expense report, has ever turned in an expense report without receipts. And if you had some charge on that expense report that was to the moon and back, then I'm sure your boss would've said, "Sorry, fella, you can't do that." So I'm here to tell the city that this is extortion. I don't appreciate being extorted. I already paid a fee in the court for this. And quite frankly, this is just, it's extortion. Now, I don't know if the city considers themselves a racket, but by golly, it looks like an extortion racket. May not be a protection racket, but it's an extortion racket. And I would like to get this resolved. I'm not going to pay that kind of money for what they did. And that is what I have to say about that. Do you have anything to show for the documentation on this?
We need to address the councilman.
Do you have anything to show for the documentation on this?
I'll talk with Mr. Tap, who is the director of Community Development Services, who's responsible for that. And I will send you all the information that we have.
Well, I was supposed to be here for this, I mean, the hearing. You would think they would be prepared for that, now wouldn't you?
Mr. Tap, do you have all the receipts?
I do in the office. I didn't know this was...
Okay.
Hi, you didn't get the notice? I've got two letters about it. Surely you know what's going on in your own office.
We'll be more than happy to get you all the documentation, Ms. Smith.
I'd like to see it before I do this, and before, quite frankly. You hold a hearing on whether or not you should put a lien against my house for it. Like I said, I'd already done more than half the work, or at least half the work. And I sent them a check for 50 bucks saying I felt that was fair. More than fair, actually, because I think I probably would've paid maybe... Well, if I were getting something done on my house, which I have done many times, I would've paid for a number of things done. But cleaning out the culvert, I'm thinking it was five minutes' worth of work. So...
Thank you. Appreciate it, and we will get the documents to you.
Okay, when can I expect to see them?
I'd like to have them tomorrow.
Okay. You can deliver them to my house. I put your address on there, so then we'll go to my house, and I'm after.
Okay.
You don't know that?
Ms. Smith?
Alice Smith.
Doug, I have the address here. Okay, we'll move along to council reply. Anybody? Alrighty, we'll go into the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is September the 23rd, which was the regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
One comment is that the term bids are used in the... In the, I gotta find it here. And I think the reference really is for the RFQ that was collected from the... That was gathered for the selection of a bond attorney.
Right. I'm aware of that, and we will correct the minutes accordingly.
So, just to make sure that someone doesn't misinterpret that in the future is...
Yep.
It'll be corrected, Larry.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Okay, I'm second.
Second.
Wayne?
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Wilms?
Aye.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carey?
The second set of minutes is a city council special meeting that was held on October the 1st. And that was to set the millage for the upcoming year, so that we could be in compliance with having that millage go to the county. Any errors or omissions? Seeing not to entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Wayne?
Alright. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carey?
We do have monthly financial reports that are on the table. If you'd like to have a copy, please help yourself. They're also available at City Hall. Anybody have any comments on them? Okay. I'm now going to read something and talk about a situation. It's a real privilege for me to be able to do this, and it's to talk about our fire department. On Monday, October the 21st, our fire department was requested to assist White Rock Fire Department in Missouri with a large 30,000 gallon propane tank that was on fire. Most firefighters will tell you it's the rush of a fire call that they love about their job. But that day, they faced a very dangerous situation that quite possibly could've resulted in a high number of casualties had the unthinkable happened. These firefighters, along with those of other agencies that assisted during the incident, are to be commended for their bravery, teamwork, and skill that resulted in a positive outcome of that fire. While they understandably feared for their lives, as they wouldn't have on a typical fire scene, their training took the lead, and they worked together to solve the problem. I would like to publicly recognize these firefighters from Bella Vista who responded that day. And if you're present, would you please rise? Deputy Chief Brian Wolfgang. Division Chief Scott Cranford. Battalion Chief Chuck Larson. Battalion Chief Ronnie Cooper. Captain Jason Bowman. Captain Seth Calick. Captain Justin Tesrow. Firefighter Byron Abernathy. Firefighter Ty Frankheart. Firefighter James Butcher. Firefighter Chasden Harmon. I would also like to publicly commend the firefighters from those additional agencies on the scene. Grabot, Noel, Pea Ridge, Pineville, and White Rock, without whom the same outcome may not have been reached. You all made your cities and your agencies very, very proud. This was a very, very treacherous situation. And this is the one reason why Bella Vista Fire Department is always willing to answer the call of a neighbor in need. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carey, 6-0.
Thank you. The first order of business is an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Bella Vista, Arkansas, on the question of issuing bonds under Amendment Number 62 to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, levying a 1% sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. For those of you at home that aren't aware of what's happening, I'll try and give you a synopsis. We have recognized over the last two years terrific growth. And as part of that growth, we have been constantly trying to improve all our infrastructure, roads, police, fire. Consistently, in all of our interviews with our residents, those three always lead the pack. We had a look at the police station. It's not a police station. It is a former POA office building. It is below standards. Everybody is sitting on everyone else's lap. It's very, very crowded. It's a building that does not serve the needs of a modern fire department, excuse me, police department. If any of you would like to have a tour, simply call the chief, and he'll be more than happy to arrange one for you. Chief went on a class well over a year ago. How do you build a new fire station? And we took it from there. So we've been working on this probably about a year and a half. And on the finance side, we've been at it for over two years, carefully planning this. There are some renditions here. So the very first one you'll see is by Height-Jackson. And that's the proposed exterior of what the new police station might look like. It is a 44,000 square foot. It houses the court, this area here, as well as the police station. It is planned out for the next 30 years. We don't want to have insufficient planning, so that future councils are scratching their heads, wondering how they can add on. We also had a look at the fire side of the house. Fire Station Number 3 on Glasgow was built in the mid-1980s. It too is no longer compliant. And with the growth that we're seeing on the west side, it is not able to service the needs of our residents properly. We need an ambulance there. And this will give us the opportunity to have an extra bay and more firefighters, so that we can respond better to the needs and wants of our community. The land has already been purchased. We purchased three acres from Cooper earlier this year. It's almost right across the street. And that is going to be the site of the new fire station if the voters approve the bond. Lastly, the third component is a fire training tower, which you can also see, it's in the middle. Constant training is mandatory in any public service, but particularly in the fire arena. Today, when we need to have mandatory fire tower training, we can either go to Joplin, Springdale, or Lincoln. And similar to the situation when we had court in Bentonville, where we would have 10 to 12 officers on trial day out of the city in case they had to be called, we can have up to six to eight firefighters and equipment out of the city, down doing training, and then something goes horribly wrong. And particularly with a fire, every second counts. So the training is key, and it's part of the annual training that every firefighter goes through. There is also going to be a housing facility for the equipment. And there's going to be an eight-inch-thick concrete pad, because, again, there's mandatory driving that has to be done every year. The firefighters are measured on that. And in the past, the POA has been kind, and so have some of the churches, and let us use their parking lots. But you can imagine the condition of the parking lot after you have very, very heavy fire equipment doing driving drills. The concrete will solve that, and it will be on its own pad. We currently have the land selected. It's on license from the POA. And we have money built into the bond to actually purchase the property. And it's at Chelsea and Tudor. And so, at a very, very high level, that's where we sit. The cost, including all the fees, all the architectural and engineering costs, are laid out in a document that's available on the table. And the price tag is 24.3 million. Now... We don't have to spend all that. However, we have been very conservative in the pricing, because we know costs are going to go up. So there's escalation costs in there. We know concrete is going to go up, because if the voters approve this, the next step will be to get the plans done. And the plans won't be ready until the end of next year. So we won't have a spade in the ground until 2021. 2021 also happens to be the year that Walmart is going to build their new home office. So we know that there's going to be pressure on the trades, on material, and especially on cement. So we've put escalators on that as well. The process as it stands now is, this ordinance has been written by our bond counsel. And Mr. Bowman is here tonight, representing the counsel. The financing has been done by our municipal advisor, which is Raymond James. I'm going to, excuse me, I have just read the ordinance for the first time. An ordinance takes three readings, and then council votes on it. It doesn't have to go three readings. If council feels comfortable, they can accelerate it by suspending the rules and moving to third and final reading. What we will do tonight is, we will have the ability for council members to make suggestions, if they would like to do so, regarding the bond. And we will get a consensus. And if there's a consensus on each of the changes, then we'll ask Mr. Bowman to write a new ordinance for the November meeting. It comes back for first reading. And what we will do with this ordinance is we will table it indefinitely, which basically means that we kill the ordinance. When we had our work session a week ago, Chief Sims was not able to join us. He was out of state on vacation. And he has asked if he can address council tonight, and to all of you that are watching, because he did not have the opportunity to present his two projects and the need for them. So if I may, I'll use a point of personal privilege, and I'll ask chief, if you would step forward, please, sir, and present your case.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers.
Just sit down.
Also, I want to say thank you, sir, for addressing my guys. That was a very, very treacherous situation that they're involved in last Monday that could've been detrimental in the case. Councilmember Fowler, I want to say thank you for stopping by this afternoon and visiting with me. It was actually an idea from him for me to come up and kind of address some concerns. Some concerns on the bond issue with the training center. You know, a lot of people's been hearing things about ISO ratings and so forth. And it could lower ISO ratings, lower insurance ratings, and so forth, lower the ISO score, which is true. But I do want to kind of cover some other issues or other things that this training center will do for our guys. And Mayor Christie kind of addressed a few of those a few minutes ago. And I'm going to kind of recap a little bit about that and give you a little bit of history about ISO and ISO ratings, and where we started at, and where we're at today, and then kind of lead into that. So thank you again for allowing me, sir, to do this. I appreciate it. In 2017, we were graded by the ISO Services, Insurance Services Offices. And this, you know, kind of step back and keep in mind that the Insurance Services Offices rates the fire department on their availability and their preparedness to respond. And that's how we end up with a grading scale or grading that some insurance companies use. We understand that not all insurance companies use the ISO rating, but some do. And we've seen that with our last grading change, which I'll go over that here in just a minute. We did have some people that had emailed and were excited about saving some dollars on their insurance premiums. The ISO is graded in three different areas. 10 points or 10% of that grading is emergency communications, which falls on our dispatch center, how quick they get us out to the scene. 40% of that, or 40 points of that grading scale out of the 100, is water supply. And that falls on the POA's side. They have to grade the POA's water side, and they rate them as a water department, since it's not part of the city. And then it comes to the fire department, where 50 points or 50%, being the main thing that they're grading us on, is our readiness and availability, is 50%. We actually, in that area, scored 27.7% in that area. So we're just barely above half of what you could get for an ISO rating. And part of that ISO rating is kind of broken down in engine companies, on how many engine companies we have amongst the city, which we have four at this time. Credit for reserve trucks. At that time, we had one, we have two now, so there's a change in that. Credit for pumper capacity, which we fare good on that, because we, all of our pumpers have the capacity to do the job that it needs to do here in the city. It's also rated on credit for ladder service. Actually, we require at least two ladders here in Bella Vista to get the full credit for that. We received half the credit, because we have one truck that serves as a pumper slash ladder truck. Credit for deployment analysis means, how well are your stations spread out amongst the people you serve? Okay? And I want to point out that the training centers, not only, when people think of training center, they think, "Oh, it's just a training tower for people to train in." Well, it's also going to include apparatus bay, which that apparatus bay is going to house two Class A pumpers. Okay? We have those pumpers already. One of them is county-owned, we use that as a city, and one of them is city-owned. So what's going to happen there is that, and that's an area I need a fire station slash protection down on the south-central part of town. So what our intentions are with that building and that equipment is to utilize that building and equipment as a fire station for deployment analysis, which means that station could be assigned to any call in the city. If there's personnel available to pick it up, or personnel available to take it, or stop by and grab that equipment. ISO allows to do that. So that's one. Plus, to have enough facility down in that area, we can incorporate all of that with that training tower. And it's, if you can see on the poster board, it's listed on the right-hand side of it, and also the classroom area is listed on the left-hand corner. So that's another, that's an area that we were lacking in the ISO evaluation. On deployment analysis means where your fire stations are at, protecting your people. Out of 10 credit points, we received four. I'm hoping we can get that changed by having that equipment and part personnel there some of the time. It also gives us a chance to expand or grow out. It also grades you on credit for company personnel. That, we kind of took care of some of that with our SAFER grant. Back when ISO was here, we didn't get credit for those nine guys. We had, we put those guys in place in 2018, which was after the ISO evaluation, which that will also help in the hopes of lowering that class rating. And then training. Training, what we're here to talk about. Credit for training means facility use, company training, class officer training, driver upper training, and so forth. Out of nine points, nine available credit points for the grading score, we scored 4.9, which is a little bit more than half on that. For facilities and use for training, because we do have to rely on trying to get people outside of here to do the training, we received zero credits out of 35 available credits towards that nine ISO classification credit. Reason for that is because we didn't train our guys in live-fire training during that, from 2001 to 2017, when we had our grading done. The last grading was in 2001. So that hurt. That hurt us. And the mayor was in the same meeting I was in whenever the representative from ISO that was doing the grading score told the mayor up front, "You're going to lack in these areas on the fire side." And we did. And that's when we were looking at ways we could improve, ways we can improve the training on the firefighters. We hired a training officer, way we could get things moving forward and push forward with a better ISO classification. Zero points on the facility use. We have to make sure our guys are trained 18 hours. Each one of our firefighters has to be trained 18 hours of structure-fire-related subjects. It's kind of hard to do when you don't have a building you can put a fire in.
That's annually.
That's annually. We have to train our guys annually in drivers' training. The mayor kind of touched on that. When we go out, currently right now, we have to pick a parking lot. Usually, it's the overflow parking below the driving range, or sometimes we use Reardon Hall's big parking lot. Every time, and we've used church parking lots, and we've done some major damage with it the city's had to fix. We just had to fix the POA parking lot last year, because we done damage to it. And so it's something that, this facility here will have the driving pad available for our apparatus, the weight of our apparatus, ladder truck, pumpers, weighted with water, weighted with equipment, concrete enough to where we can do our drivers' training annually that we're supposed to do. Everybody wants their guys to be able to drive, right? They know how to use their equipment, back their equipment up. So it's very, very important for that. I mean, we don't, I don't like when I get the phone calls saying, "Hey, we just put a big rut in somebody's driveway that we're using, they're letting us use without a cost." So that's hard. Is it potential lower insurance rates, having that training tower there? Yes, it is, if we can lower that classification. Is it for everybody? No. But it does help some, the lower we can get that classification. The other thing is, it's more important to me, and I think the city as a whole, just like any other city, that is working for that number-one rating. I also rate you from Class 10, to a fire department not even existing, to number one, the number-one prepared fire department ever. Rogers, Springdale, Fayetteville. Those are number-one-rated fire departments. We went, we took this fire department here. When I started here, it was a Class 7. In 2001, they rated us in 2002 as a Class 6. We went from a 6 to a Class 4. And I was building a new fire station in the Highlands, at the Highlands Gates. Building a new fire station, adding more fire personnel, getting that deployment analysis out and around to where we need to be at. It's important. It's important to try to take our city to, you know, get them to the best trained firefighters we can in northwest Arkansas. That's what it's all about. It's all about the training. Employee retention. Believe it or not, I have had people leave this fire department, because our training lacked. We didn't have a training officer, we didn't have the structure, we didn't have a place to train. They're going to places where they can get the training, they can go to training center. Rogers is getting ready to build one. Why? Because it's needed. They need to, they know they need a place to house or to train their firefighters the best way they can. Springdale, they built one a couple of years ago. Fayetteville, same thing. Springdale's right behind them. Silent Springs just opened theirs up about two months ago. Because I see the need, that the need is there to train their firefighters in every possible way to make the city safer, community safer. It's important, very important. I don't want people, I don't want to train people and them to leave, because we don't have the right training for them or the right place for them to do their training on a year-to-year basis. You know, and I'm going to speak about the land. I went out, I tried to look for a place that was out of sight, out of mind, okay? Somewhere where there wasn't around a whole lot of housing, somewhere that was, would seem to be quiet, the place that training center, and to put it. Deployment analysis told me I needed somewhere in that same general facility to get credit, or to be able to deploy apparatus if needed. Or if somebody picked up that truck, they could take it. truck that could take it quickly to an area. I got a training officer there, it's there eight, eight hours a day. If he's there, he can take that truck, we can get equipment quicker. I looked at that area and I thought, you know, this would be a really good area. And I asked, I went to CEO Tom Judson and asked him, said, do you have land available that we could, at the time, I said, purchase, but I wasn't for sure about the whole POA situation, and a place where we could be out of sight, out of mind, and protect the citizens of Bella Vista? I went there, I asked him for that. I thought that land would be, I've been looking at that land for coming in and, and, you know, great conversation about, you know, talking about what you feel like needed to be brought out or what you didn't understand. I appreciate that, I really do. All this leads to better trained firefighters, which leads to better outcomes for the community. Thank you, sir.
Chief, before you leave, are there any questions of chief that council may want to ask? John?
I had a question. I was under the impression previously that this particular land area wasn't particularly valuable or attractive, and I thought it was because of water, that it was wet. So, I was wondering, when you're talking about building classrooms and keeping apparatus there, is it a flood-prone area or?
When we originally looked at that property down there, it does get water, it does get water in that area, but it's because of the way the land is particularly, you've got to remember, they took a lot of, lot of fill out of there and they piled a lot of fill up that blocks some of that water flow going through there. So, I went, it was back at the time when, when Chris Sonnison was over community development, and I spoke with Chris, and I said, and I asked him, after, after Mr. Judson gave me several different properties the POA had, I looked at that area and I went to him and I said, is this in a flood zone area? He looked at it, wasn't in 100-year or the 500. So, the mayor and I and Jason Kelly went and looked at it again, it still was not in that 500-year flood plain. So, I think we can, we'll have to obviously build some of that area up and shed some of that water through that valley area. Does it stay in water now? Yes, because there's no way for it to run off, so.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's what we originally thought, John, on that, until we looked, researched it.
What are you getting ready to?
I have a question. Chief, in that property, you mentioned there were only two, two houses nearby within 500 feet. Are there any platted lots that are buildable like that, that are within 500 feet or less?
I'd have to go back and look. I, I think there might be some on the, on the Tudor side of the road that they might build a build on. I'd have to go back and look, or maybe on top of Tudor. I'd have to go back and look on that.
I would ask you to look at that.
But in immediate general facility of everything to the left of Tudor Drive going up, then there's no, there's no building lots, my knowledge, right there.
Only to the right, to the west?
Only to the right, I'm not for sure about the hillside there unless somebody else knows something else.
I think there's an unimproved road that goes up behind, but there's not anything up there. If I, I'm pretty sure it's that road.
Well, depends on what you like, the unimproved road, yes, it goes into the county, I believe, it goes towards the county area. But that land runs all, that run, land runs kind of at an angle back to the county, county area.
But chief, there's no way that you'd be training at night anyway, but always be daylight hours?
We would probably, more than likely, do most of our training during the daytime period. And I think somebody had said something about noise. I was just trying to figure out what kind of noise they might be concerned with. If there's any kind of, if there's training going on, what noise are, are they talking about? Does anybody know?
I don't know about noise. I think the smoke might be the worst culprit in terms of adjacent properties.
Well, the, the smoke, the smoke, most of the smoke would be internally inside the structure with a little bit of, if we're venting something out, it'd be going a little bit out of the structure, but it's going to dissipate pretty quick.
And noise is going to go up the hill because of where its location.
Noise should, noise should kind of funnel up, up, if you're talking about, I don't know what kind of noise. We're going to be doing like, like we have a pump running, but, I mean, the pumps nowadays are a whole lot, lot quieter than they used to be. So, I don't know if that's a concern, or if lights and siren or sirens or anything like that might be concerned. If they left out of that building at night, so forth, they, they more than likely wouldn't use their lights and sirens or siren.
But that's true of any of your stations. If they have a fire, they're going to light up and turn the siren on since they hit the street?
During the daytime.
Yeah.
Most, most of the time at night, generally, they run without lights and sirens, for that reason. And, and I know we had some concern when we built the fire station number four, and I don't think I've heard from those people since we built it, so.
Linda?
Chief, is the, is that a retention pond that's shown on the diagram?
Yes, it is. That is. That was, the diagram was put together by my Division Chief Cranford and kind of based off of kind of what we do here with bow swells and so forth, retention ponds and so forth, to be able to help with some of that drainage runoff.
Would this be a multi-purpose? Would it, for example, could the police use it?
The, it is, that is the intentions, just so you know. That was one of my points I was bringing up, sir. Thank you for bringing that up. It will be something the PD will be able to use as well with their tactical training. There, you know, it's all more than just fire folks. It's, we're rappelling, we've got to do rappelling, we've got to be trained for all incidences. As a matter of fact, one of the props on the property is going to be propane. So, as you heard the mayor, we have to train on that every year to be proficient in our jobs. Proficient, that's what training is, folks. You train people to keep people. We train people to make us better, to make our, our citizens and PD better. We've got to be prepared all the time. We've got to be prepared.
You know, I said, so, I just want to be clear, because I heard, you know, training tower several times, it's more than just a training tower.
That's correct.
It includes, you know, I apologize, I can't see your rendering over there, but...
Didn't have no room. I mean, you really get it turned around.
So, it's going to be like a big kind of concrete lot as well, right?
That's right.
And then there's going to be a building on it that you will have, be able to hold classroom in.
That's correct.
So, it's, it's a lot more than just a tower.
That's right.
And you, and you hit on the point lastly, which I thought was really important. At the end of the day, I mean, all the training and everything, but what it means is a higher level of fire and emergency response for the residents of Bella Vista, which is the most critical part. What about other cities potentially using this leasing? And I know that's down the road, but is that something that other cities may be interested in?
You know what it is? I have spoken with the Gravit Fire Chief, because he had expressed interest in maybe doing some sort of agreement with it. I think the mayor may have spoke to the mayor of Gravit as well, but here's one of the things I want to bring up. We are a, we have several members on our department, are regional trainers, okay? They're regional trainers through the Arkansas Fire Academy, which Arkansas Fire Academy, they have a little satellite in Lincoln, that's where the mayor referred to Lincoln, because sometimes we train there. But then also Camden, Camden, Arkansas is our main fire training academy. We hold classes here all the time. We don't have a very large venue to hold classes, and what holds, what brings in classes, the more people we can get here are more people that's, that's going to our restaurants to eat lunch during the lunch break. So, they will be used for that. It'll be joint, joint utilized, joint training regionally as well, other states.
The training that you do today is certainly recognized by other agencies. Part of the story that I, I mentioned earlier was when our team arrived on the scene at the propane fire, there were already some of the other agencies there, and our, our deputy chief walked up and said, who's in charge? They looked around and said, well, you are, because they didn't have the training.
Yeah, I want to also bring up too, is on, on that call out there, we have a full fled hazmat team here. And for those that don't know it, Bella Vista covers hazmat for Decatur, Gravit, Sulphur Springs and Maysville. So, if there's a hazardous material incident in any one of those cities, the City of Bella Vista hazmat team handles that. And we had five of our hazmat members on that site, on scene. That's what we consider a hazardous material incident. They're on, on scene, so we have the extra level of expertise that's here in Bella Vista that a lot of people don't realize, so.
Chief?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Larry. I'll, I'll...
Where do some of the other fire departments train now? Gravit, Decatur, Gentry, Centerton, where do they go?
Good question. I mean, it would be something we'd probably need to ask him and see if they utilize the same places we go to. I would assume that like Gentry would probably go maybe to Siloam. I'm, I'm not for sure. But there, that is, that'd be the closest place to them for, for some of this training. See, not all the training they'd be able to get. Like currently right now, Bentonville has a training tower, just giving you an example. They can't burn in it, okay? So, they don't, they don't have that availability.
It's at one of their stations, correct?
Yes, it's at their main station. Rogers Fire Department has a nice training facility with the, kind of like the same way, has apparatus bay, has classrooms. They have a nice, big, big, multi-story tower next to it, can't burn in it. But they're, they're in the process right now, just got approved to build a brand-new burn building, because they understand the need, they've got to keep their people there and train them at every given time or point or place.
Doug?
No, I was just going to say, and this is just, just a little bit of background on why I went to the chief today. Typically, I would have gone a little bit sooner than I did, but, so this bond issue, you know, it has kind of been on the table now for a couple of months and...
You know, it takes a lot of, you know, just a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of legwork, if you will, a lot of research, you know, just a lot of kind of sitting and thinking about it. You know, the, the public safety complex, to me, just makes a lot of sense. I can be fully supportive of that. The fire station that's proposed to replace number three, you know, fully supported, supportive. The one that I felt, you know, a little more tepid about was the fire training facility. I just kind of didn't really know, because the rationale that had been used, you know, up to date, and I heard a little more depth today, but a lot of what we were hanging our hat on, it's felt like, and it's actually on this document right here that's in City Hall, that it was, that it would most likely reduce insurance homeowner premiums for residents. That could be true, could also not be true, because, well, as we all know, premiums are based on a lot of other factors other than just your ISO rating. And I, I, I actually, you know, made the proposition to several residents in Bella Vista, I'm not going to mislead people, say it was 50, 75 or 100, but it was probably like 15 or 20, just to get their response on how they felt about the facility. And, and another part to this, this conversation was that we were going to combine the fire training facility on the same question as the fire station. And I think in, in prior conversations with the city council and the mayor, et cetera, at least I felt like it was going to be three separate questions, but now we're combining them together. And I was like, I don't know if that's really the right thing to do or not. Maybe we should keep them separate and leave each one stand on its own. So, again, I wanted to go out and just kind of do some vetting, if you will. And quite honestly, some of the feedback I had received from, from several of these people was a tepid response on the fire training. It's like, well, can't we go somewhere else? What's it really going to do for us? How much is it going to cost? Well, that's a lot of money. And also was that, no, I wouldn't combine it with the fire station, right? And that's what I was hearing. So, that prompted when I went in to, to see Chief Sims today to sit down and say, okay, this is where I am, this is what I've been hearing, you, we're going to have to talk this through, because in order for me to be able to fully support this, I have to have more than what I have right now. I want to support it, but I have to have more. So, we just start talking through it. And you heard Chief Sims address, and you heard his passion, and you heard, you know, his, his, his drive to be sure that this happens. There's, there's just a lot of, just a myriad of very, very valid reasons why we need this. And it's not just rationale, just trying to make it happen, they're, they're valid. And I will tell you that as I walked out of the meeting with Chief Sims today, I said, I can fully support this, but we have to get the messaging right, so the residents of Bella Vista fully understand why this is necessary. And as I walked out of the meeting with Chief, Chief Sims today, and I think the messaging is really, truly, the effective messaging is starting tonight. And I will just tell you right now, I can be fully supportive of the training facility and keeping it in the same question as the fire station, because once the residents hear this, I really don't, I really can't see them not being fully supportive.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any more comments or questions for the chief? All right, chief, thank you.
I do want to say, we, we did change some language on that form.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Mr. Bowman from our bond council. Mr. Bowman, for the, those of you watching at home, is the person who actually drafted the ordinance and drafted the verbiage that is being proposed for the ballot. He has a great deal of experience. He and his colleagues have done 133 of, of these sales and use tax bonds. That's quite an accomplishment. And I was wondering if you could address the breaking of the fire into two, is that wise? What historically do other cities do? If you could explain that for us, that'd be a great help.
Sure. Thank you, mayors, again, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. Our constitution requires that separate purposes be voted separate in separate questions. And so, that's the reason why the fire question is separate from the public safety question. And so, when I was visiting with the mayor, your staff attorney, other members of the, of the city administration, I knew that there were two purposes. And so, it never came to my attention that there would be a need to separate the two different fire projects that you have. Typically, when cities have a same purpose, like two fire issues, they will include both of those purposes in the same question. So, if they're both fire-related, that will be one question on the ballot. Clearly, the public safety is a separate question. And so, that's why when I drafted the ordinance that you have before you, I combined the two fire questions, the fire training complex, as well as the new fire station, into one fire question. Again, it's up to you as the council as to whether you would want to separate the fire into two separate questions. You could do that. Again, typically, that's not done, but again, you as the council can decide whether you want to separate those into two separate questions in addition to the public safety question. Again, most cities do not do that. They would consider it to be one fire question, one question on the ballot.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you, sir.
If, if we were to want to split this question for the fire into two areas, would that start the process over again? How would that affect?
It would, because the ordinance that you have before you tonight on your agenda has both of the fire projects as one ballot question. So, it would require me to go back to my office, draft a separate ballot question for the fire station, a separate ballot question for the fire training complex, and have a maximum principal amount for each of those two questions. Whereas, right now, we're at 5.5 million maximum principal amount for fire, both of those projects together.
So, it's imperative that our messaging to the public clarifies that we're not really dealing just with ISO ratings and some potential of homeowner insurance savings, but rather it's a bigger picture of having our department prepared and meeting the performance standards that a fire department like Bella Vista has, is properly prepared and trained for all sorts of circumstances.
The, the message for you, of course, is why you need this. And so, that's outside of my, my legal expertise. My legal expertise is, do we have to have more than two questions? And the answer to that is, you can have a minimum of two questions on this ballot and comply with our state constitution.
Okay, thank you.
And I previously was very concerned about having the two on one question, because I didn't want to take the chance of losing the fire station for people who didn't want the fire training center. And I think chief's presentation pointed out the importance of having extra coverage in that section of the city, which is something that was kind of off my radar screen. And I think based on that, along with the other things that chief presented, I would be willing to not have them separated, as I'd previously thought.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen from Raymond James, you have anything to add at all? Okay. So, now we have to come to our own discussion and form a consensus. The main discussion we've been having this evening and also at the work session was, do we keep it to two or do we break it into three? And I, unless I'm hearing wrong, I believe the consensus is, let's leave it at two, based on what the chief has said tonight and also what the experts are saying. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
That's right. Yes, that's right. But I mean, are we going to open up a more at-large conversation, just about the bond, just about the funding and different things like that?
I just want to get through this first, if I may.
Fair enough. I just don't want to close it too quick.
No, no, I'm not going to. We'll be here until 3:00 in the morning, if you like, Doug. Are there other areas regarding the structure of the bond, how it's put together, that are of concern? Yes, sir.
This isn't a concern so much as a question. I think it's a question for Raymond James. It has that total bond issuance cost, and it's broken down, it's broken down for the different projects, and then there's a total. So if one project would pass and one not pass, literally that lower amount would be the issuance cost.
That's correct. So it's kind of broken out in front of you, is really the police or the public safety projects, then the fire. So before, you've got a summary slide. As it would be today, if it was two questions, one of them failed, one passed, we'd be looking at the subtotal for the fire or the subtotal for the public safety complex standalone. Either one of those have sufficient funds or estimated costs to be able to issue the debt.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Steve?
Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
I think you spoke about this in our work session, and I may not have been prepared to understand what you were saying at that time. And I have my mind wrapped around it a little better tonight. Would you talk a little bit more, under the bond issuance cost, the contingency? And in what conditions would the contingency be necessary? Has it been necessary in the past? And who makes that determination?
So contingency, if we were to sell bonds today, it would be a non-event, would not be necessary. Really, I've seen it, part of it is being conservative, wanting to make sure that there is sufficient funds. I've had clients that have gotten, gone through this process, got their bids, cost came in higher than what was estimated, and they were stuck. So part of it's also that if the market demanded a different structure, couponing structure, that we gave ourselves sufficient flexibility. These are about 5% contingency. If they're not needed, they don't, it will never get used. Really, it was just to ensure that we have flexibility to get the lowest cost of borrowing for the city.
In other words, it looks more attractive to the investor.
Yes.
And so those contingency funds, they're already, we already have contingencies built into each of the individual projects, right?
Correct.
Yes. So this is either a contingency on top of that, or it's a contingency for a different set of circumstances?
Both.
And whose determination is it as to whether the million dollars, assuming all projects are approved, whose determination is it whether the contingency is necessary?
So the contingency is only going to be used if we're running up against the ballot limit. So for police, the 18.8 million. I fully expect we will never issue 18.8 million. I, my, if we were to sell bonds today, it's really going to be less that contingency, so about $860,000 less. It's not like we're, we will only, we'll take the bids or the estimated bids from the contractors, and that's will be our starting value, and we'll go from there. We're not issuing them for the fun of it. Actually, Mr. Bowman has to give a tax opinion that we're not, that the uses of the project or the dollars are tax-exempt eligible. So we can't just borrow it and do nothing with it. It's going to have to go to the project.
I'll share with my fellow council members, kind of, the thought that I've been having around these contingencies and, in general, the total cost of the projects, is that up to this point, they haven't, as I understand the process, they haven't met with any resistance along the way, aside from the good faith efforts of the people who've put the estimates together. And I do trust in that. I also feel like, in projects of this complexity, in this magnitude, this order of spend, that there should be rigor in the process for identifying things such as double contingencies, contingencies on top of contingencies, for costs that seem to be growing with time. And I am trying to kind of wrap my mind around whether that's the council's responsibility is to offer that kind of constructive criticism of the numbers that are there, or even just to say, I think that these propositions have a better chance of being successful if they've had rigor applied to them along the way. Rigor that's not been visible to me up to this point. So I'm kind of trying to figure out whether that's the council's role, is to step in and say, hey, you know, these things, sometimes they can, they're all intended in good faith, as I say, and the numbers can balloon. And if there are a way to scrape across this such that we could demonstrate for the voters that will be responding to this initiative, if we could demonstrate for them that we've applied every rigor, we've sharpened our pencils, we've held numbers, we've asked for adjustments that the voter, as a community, the voter community would appreciate that. And so, to my other council members, that's what I bring to you today, is if that's our role, this is our opportunity. This is our opportunity to say, there's $24 million in estimated spend here. Some of those are contingencies that may or may not get used. Could we drop contingencies out? Could we make adjustments in any of the line items that are on here in a way to gain, again, the trust and the confidence of the voters of Bella Vista such that the end result, which is an improved police facility, improvements in our responsiveness to fires, would be successful with our voters?
I'm going to let Daniel speak to the 10% contingency, but for the 8%, just a second. I can tell you that chief, myself, and Kerry were on a conference call for the better part of an hour and a half with Nabol's Construction, with their VP of pre-construction. And he's the one that went through line by line with us on the construction estimate that was done by the third party, was it Wentworth? Oh, Woolridge, that's right. And it was that kind of rigor that we put to it, Steve. For example, he was the one who said, your concrete's too low. Because Woolridge was looking at it right now, and he was saying, by the time you get spade, you know, in the ground, you're going to be competing for a lot of concrete.
Fair enough, and I don't necessarily...
So I think that has been done. I'm sorry to interrupt, but Daniel, perhaps you can talk to the rigor behind the 10% because I'm, I don't know it either.
So the 10% are determined on the contingency estimate, or the bottom number, my number?
I think you're looking at the estimated contingency, Steve, at 10%? Is that what you're looking?
No, actually, I wasn't. I was looking at the contingency under bond issuance cost.
I can't speak to the top?
Because I think it's a double contingency then. We've covered contingencies in each individual project. And then, after the fact, yet another layer of contingency comes in.
Part of it is that when we, when you sell bonds, bonds are not always sold at par. They may be sold at a higher coupon that results in a lower rate, lower effective borrowing rate. This allows us to sell them at a premium. Right now, if we were to sell bonds, we'd have about $948,000 in premium. So what it is, is the investor's willing to pay you a higher dollar price. In turn, they get a little bit higher debt service, but it nets out to you as the borrower at a lower borrowing cost. Part of that rationale is that if an investor buys a premium coupon, they have built-in rising rate, it's a hedge. So as rates rise, their dollar price, so their mark-to-market in their portfolio doesn't get hurt as bad. It is purely a bond structuring. It is not a higher, if you were to look at the cash flows, it actually works out better for you. So what we've done is, we want that flexibility so that when we go to sell bonds, which it may be a year from now, that if the market will give us the best price or the lowest borrowing cost with a premium structure, we'll have the flexibility to do that.
And in doing so, you would tap the contingency?
So the contingency gives us room to work with that. So we would actually not sell 18.8 million. We'd sell, say, 17.9, but premium under state law counts towards our voted limit. So if we sell 17.9 million, which would be minus that contingency on the police, Ryan's going to count original issue premium as part of our voted, as, towards our voting bond, just like we talked about the insurance premium last week, that it's not, the cash value of it. If we were to buy an insurance policy for the reserve fund, the constitution requires that we put the cap, treat the cash value as the full face amount towards our voted limit. I would remind everybody, the 18.8 and the 5.5 are not to exceed numbers. That is purely, we will never go through that. That's bonds, premium, reserves, everything. The incremental premium or contingency that I added was purely because, in my recent experience, when we go for waiting for a year potentially between the time we approve something and sell it, sell the bonds to actually fund it, I've had multiple clients that their project costs have exceeded even the contingencies.
And that may be the case.
And really, because...
I appreciate that, but I, I'm really struggling with exactly that concept, that you're kind of the final protection for the city against missing the number. And I would rather, I would rather not hand that responsibility
One question I would ask...
Away from the city. I would rather us take that responsibility. And I think the way we could take the responsibility, for whatever the contingencies end up being, that those contingencies are there, and I think the mayor explained one about concrete, and it sounds to me like, well, then that's not a contingency, that's a cost. If we know it with that kind of certainty at this point, it's not a contingency. And other contingencies I know are commonplace in large construction projects like this. And I'm not saying there won't be a need for contingency, but I do feel like there's ways for the city to fund that contingency outside the scope of the bond issue.
Such as?
Such as our reserves.
You want to dip into the reserves?
If necessary. Hopefully, it's not even necessary. But that is, that is an alternative source, an alternative to going to the residents of Bella Vista and asking them to pay more for their groceries.
That is, that is actually, when we get to these projects that have come in, the bids have been higher than what estimates were, even with contingency. The cities have had to make a decision, do we, A, kill the project altogether? Or B, have to re-engineer it, which would reduce your construction costs? Or the last option is to come out of, come out of pocket from reserves or from other city funds? The reason we've got these contingencies in there is so that we could, we've got cushion and that we could do it without potentially having to dip into your reserves. That's the only reason. Really, our job is to give you, give you advice. My recommendation is to have that contingency. The council ultimately has final say-so, so the bonds get approved. You have to approve us selling the bonds. You also have to approve the bids on the project. So that is where you're able to then hold everybody's feet to the fire. If the contingencies aren't needed, the cost never gets passed to the voters. But it gives you that flexibility to where you can then make the decision six months or a year from now. Bids are higher. Do we want to, how do we want to manage it? Do we want to manage it with reserves? Do we want to sell a few more bonds? If we limit that contingency, you may only have one option at that point. That's where we were going with it.
Well, Mayor Christie, I just wanted to kind of put that out there for fellow council members to consider. And I think Councilmember Wozniak had a response to it, too. I'd like to hear from the other council members. I don't, if I'm the only one that has this thought, then I'm not going to belabor the issue.
Well, we've already mentioned that we don't have a clue how this works. There's the expert. You know, we need to be leaning that way. Plus, if you look at your numbers, the chief gave us his 13-3 number five, six months ago. We're not even going to break ground for another two-plus years. You think all this is going to hold solid?
Well, I think if we were committed to it holding solid, it would have to hold solid.
Then you wouldn't get your building at the price that he quoted us six months ago, and he wouldn't get either building at the price that was quoted whenever he had his numbers. So literally, you're hoping nothing happens, everything stays exactly the same, there's no inflation, nothing else goes on, prices stay the same for the next two years. That's what you're hoping.
I'm not hoping, I'm saying we could require it.
When's the last time you built a house? And whatever number they gave you when you started, that's what you ended with.
Right.
And as you start doing these things, there's going to be change orders because they're going to get into it, and they're going to find, I went to the same school he did.
Yes, sir.
And it's all in there, and this is what he's trying to prevent, so we don't get cut short.
I understand that. I've also had to make tough decisions about the size of my house, the amenities in my house. I've had to make those tough decisions because of affordability, and so...
But the price did go up, though.
And it didn't go up if I made a reduction.
So you're going to cut out his bulletproof windows or something, or cut out a training room?
I'm not going to cut anything out.
But you're saying we still have the ability to make that call, right? We're not later down the process.
Yeah, so, and I think we talked about this a little bit in the study session. Do you think that the, that incremental contingency is the difference between it passing and not? And if you think that's a number that would result in the risk of the voter, the community not supporting it, by all means, I'll be the first to say, cut it out.
No, I don't think it's that angle. I do think the angle of, hey, the city council has pushed back on the numbers, has really tried to apply good stewardship over the responsibility that we have before putting this before the voters, I think that would be appreciated. Whatever form that takes, I think that is to the benefit of the proposition passing.
Well, remember, and we can do this as part of the education as well, these are numbers, these are budget numbers, if you like. It doesn't mean it's going to happen this way. It could very well mean that we're sitting here 18 months from now, and the real numbers are here. We don't need to do it. We don't need to cut anything, and in fact, we may not even need all the contingency. I think what is being offered is a buffer for something further down the road. But ultimately, it's our responsibility as to whether or not we're going to exceed that buffer, or we're going to live by it. Or if we don't need it, I'm not going to borrow the money for it. I'm very happy just cutting back because it was the right decision to make in the first place. And I think that's what I'm hearing.
I had a question. Daniel, is part of your contingency due to the fact that the bonds are going to be issued in the future and interest rates could be different than they are right this minute? I mean, the interest rate can move either way, good or bad.
And so we're looking at right now borrowing all in. If we were doing 15 years, about 2%. So I think there are a lot of things, just if you pick up the paper today, you got, the Fed's going to raise, probably raise rates, you got a bunch, or lower rates. Other central banks are doing the same thing. There's a lot of economic signs that the economy is slowing some, but inflation doesn't seem to be an issue. If you were, if I were to stand here a year ago, I would have told you the rates were going up. And I think that was a consensus. I don't know that the consensus is that rates are going up today. But that's to show you how much can change in six to 12 months. So I always ask for flexibility, because it's going to be, it's easier for me to stand here and ask for flexibility today than 18 months from now and tell you, we can't do this because we didn't give ourselves enough flexibility. So that's all, that's all I would be asking for. I work for you guys. So if you say, let's cut the contingencies, Ryan can modify the ordinance, and we'll be back next month.
I guess along those lines, one question is, we've got over $3 million, which is about one-sixth of the total for, on the police station, anyway. And it's true in the other ones, too, I believe, but not quite.
It goes to a third party that's actually paying off the bond, correct?
It's correct. So we would, the tax actually would not go into effect until July 1st, if it was passed at the March election. There's a two-month lag between collections and when those dollars actually get to DFNA and remitted back to the city. The city would actually send a notice to DFNA to send the money directly to the bond trustee. So that money will go to the trustee because it can only be spent for the voted purposes. So to the degree there is some lag in construction timing, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, the money would sit at the trustee, and we would pay cash for a portion of the project. So we would only finance the portion that was needed at the point in time we're ready to borrow money. Is that correct? So if we start collecting it in July 1?
Is there a possibility you could make me a cheat sheet on all this?
So what I'm saying is, is that the money will start being collected in July 1. If you don't issue bonds until December... If you don't issue bonds until December, that's about a million dollars, give or take, because we're about two point two million. So that's a million dollars that's going to be collected, that's going to be sitting at the bank. When we go to sell bonds, that million dollars will be spent first and then we will sell bonds for the balance. So to the degree you're dragging the timeline out after the tax is in place, we're reducing our borrowing amount every single day.
Yeah, well, actu- actually, the, the tax can only be used to pay debt service. So you would have to issue the bonds for the full amount. You couldn't use that money to pay construction costs. I may have misunderstood Mr. Allen's question. Because the voters are living that tax only to pay debt service on the bonds. So you can only pay debt service on the bonds. So you have to issue, if you collected five hundred thousand dollars before you issued the bonds, you would still have to issue five hundred thousand dollars in bonds for that tax to be used to pay debt service.
But it would, then, what would happen is we'd sell the bonds and it would get paid up, a portion of it would get paid almost immediately.
How, how long do we have to build these facilities?
Yeah, that's, that's actually the, the point I was going to, to address. The IRS, believe it or not, has rules. I know you're a little surprised by that. Because we're issuing these bonds as tax exempt, which means the bondholders that are purchasing your debt, the interest that they receive is exempt from federal income taxes. So back to my original point, the IRS has rules with respect to how you issue the bonds and how you spend the money. You have to, within six months of issuing the bonds, you have to either spend or be obligated to spend five percent of the principal amount. So I'm not a math major, so I can't do that in my head. But five percent of whatever the total twenty-four point three million dollars would be, a little over a million dollars, million two, I guess, that has to either be spent or you must have a contract to spend. So for example, you can have a contract with your architect. But you have to do that within six months of closing on the bond issue. And then you have to reasonably expect to spend the money within a three-year period. So from the time you get close on the bond issue, three years, you have to expect to spend the full amount within that time period.
So back to your question again, Larry. The earliest that we could probably get a spade in the ground would be late spring, early summer of 2021. But we're already collecting the tax if it goes through in July of this year?
Right.
And, and so again, you're, you're looking at, you know, maybe this time next year, maybe even later, before you're issuing the bonds to hit that, that six-month requirement with respect to the five percent spend down. And so I think to the point that you were making earlier with respect to that contingency, and keep in mind, even though that's under bond issuance cost, that's not a contingency that's received by any of the professionals associated with this bond issue. So I don't want you to think that that million dollars is going to professionals even though it's under bond issuance cost. That contingency is driven by the market. So whatever the market is in October or December of 2020, whenever you decide as a council in a city to move forward with this bond issue, that will dictate whether any of that contingency is used or not. It's not, it's not Mr. Allen, it's not the bond attorneys, it's whatever the market will, will, will require at the time. And again, as Daniel said, and I want to emphasize it again, you control what we issue. We have to come back to the council for you to approve the ordinance authorizing the bonds to be issued. So once the voters approve this in March, it doesn't mean this just happens overnight. There are still a number of steps in the process. Most importantly, you as a council oversee everything that we do from March the third through when the closing is, whenever that might be. So you're, you're very much involved in the process. Mr. Allen, Ms. Schluderman, Raymond James, they'll be in contact with the council with respect to the numbers and how they look at the time that you're proposing to issue these bonds.
And I'd just like to again iterate that the debt service reserve fund is in effect a state law, but it really becomes your last payment?
So it's not a state law, it's a marketing issue. It depends on, so the longer the term we would sell bonds for, the better the debt service coverage is on the tax. So depending on what that coverage is at such time, we go to market, will dictate whether or not a reserve is necessary or at what level it is. But you're absolutely right, that debt service reserve fund would be applied to make the last payment. So at such a point in time where the amount outstanding is equal to that reserve fund, there are mechanisms for it to be released to, to pay debt service. So it is in effect coming back to the city to pay bonds.
Yeah, it's, it's simply a rainy day fund. In the event that sales tax collections aren't sufficient to pay debt service, the bondholders know that that rainy day fund, that debt service reserve fund is there to make up the shortfall in, in the tax collections. And again, as, as the mayor and Daniel have mentioned, that's then used to the extent you don't need it. And no one anticipates you ever needing to tap into that debt service reserve and choose to make the final payment on the bonds. You're borrowing it, but then you get the return on the back end. It can bear interest for the life of the bonds.
And the necessity of it and the level at which it's funded is going to be based on the market at the time we sell bonds. So it has to provide value in the form of, it's got to save you money. If your cost is exactly the same with or without, we would go without it. But my experience has been that the reserve fund does help in the marketing and the marketability of, of the debt issuance.
Is there any strategy that would allow us to match up the collection of the sales tap, sales tax on the beginning of the project more closely than almost a two-year gap between when the sales tax begins to be collected and we break ground on, on the project? It seems like a very long period of time to me.
Is that the norm? Is really the question.
I don't, wouldn't say there's a norm.
But there's always a gap.
Yeah, there's usually going to be some gap. Some people are further along in the process such that they've got, they're ready to go to bid the day after the tax, after the election. I've seen some that it's a longer timeframe. But if you can get inside of that six-month window or the, where you've got to spend the first amount and you know you're going to be within three years, we have clients that say, we'd rather take rate risk off the table, go ahead and borrow it, invest it. That way we've got the money in our hands, knowing that we've got to spend it and then the clock starts. But that's a function of where our rates can go. Is it better for us to take some of the rate risk off the table and borrow now and let it invest temporarily? But usually it's really depends.
Well, could I, could I ask again, is there a way for us to match up the beginning of the sales tax collection with the beginning of the project more closely than almost two years?
I have a comment, I have a comment on that before you answer. I heard the sales tax starts July one and we break ground at the earliest spring of the next year. That's not two years, that's around nine months.
No, not the next year, two years out.
You can, you can delay the effective date of the tax.
It's due July twenty.
Yeah, it's July twenty twenty to spring of twenty twenty-one, it's nine months.
Spring of twenty twenty-one, we're in twenty nineteen. This would be, this would be next year, this would be next year, okay.
It'll be next year. So you could effectively, because keep in mind, you're going to have some, you got the mon, the lag from the day it starts and the day money starts coming in. So Ryan said you could delay until the effective date of the taxes until, say, January first of twenty twenty-one.
Right. Yeah, you, you can delay the effective date up to twelve months. So, but that has to be written into the ballot. Okay? So if you decide to do that, then that would require some additional language to, to the ballot. If, if nothing else is done.
That's the answer to the question.
If nothing else is done, then it will go into effect on July one of, of twenty twenty.
People would need to understand, that money may start being collected. It's not going in someone's pocket somewhere. It sits in that account and is going to be used to pay for that project and only that project. In fact, we never see that money. So it's always going to go toward that project.
So the monies that we start collecting in July, can we spend those on the project?
Cannot.
Cannot?
The only purpose that's on the ballot, the only purpose for this tax is to pay principal and interest on the bonds that are approved as part of this ballot question. So it's not any bonds you might want to do for streets in the future. It's not for anything other than the fire question and the public safety question due to the fact that one or both of those are approved on the March the third ballot.
So this is not a project where we borrow temporary monies until we know the project cost and then we go out with the bond issue at the end? We're talking about a bond issue at the front here. So if, if the voters approve the eighteen, or the twenty-four point three, that would be the value of the bond issue or would it be two separate ones?
It would, it would be one bond issue.
One bond.
One bond.
For twenty-four three, because that's what's been approved.
A, a maximum of twenty-four three. Again, to the extent that you don't need to borrow that full amount, then we would just borrow what the city needs.
So when does that, when does that decision?
If we were in a situation where one project was a year ahead of the other one, we could do two series.
You could, you could.
To where we could borrow a portion of the money today or your day one and then the balance of it at a later date. Let's say the fire department could build, could go under construction a year earlier or significant amount of time earlier, we could split it up into two issues.
Well, how about this? The, the, the design fees are the front end of this project, right? The front end. The design fees based on this schedule are about one point four million. So could we issue those starting on July first? So that the monies are available to spend to have that architectural services done starting day one?
Wouldn't you be increasing your cost when you have to have multiple closings at that point?
Typically, when you, when you issue more series of bonds, not always, but typically you're paying issuance cost every time you go out to the market. And so what I think, and I, I won't get into the financial side, but typically what you find, the more, the more issues you do, the higher your, your issuance costs are because there are a number of things that have to be repeated each time that you do it. So there's some.
And I'm thinking that you wouldn't necessarily go out and do one point, one point four, one point five million. You may do five million to start with.
Well, what you'd actually, I think from a practical matter, you would use, there's a, effectively a reimbursement. So the city could spend that money and we could reimburse the city out of, so you could use your reserves to pay those initial bills. And at the time of issuance, we would basically, we would reimburse the city for those out-of-pocket costs.
Do we get any interest back on that money?
Unfortunately, no.
Dollar for dollar.
If we borrowed it at the bank, would we be reimbursed?
You couldn't borrow it from the bank.
Okay.
So, and the other issue is that the likelihood that you borrow it at the bank at a rate equal to or less than what you'd be earning on it is very low. You're going to end up paying more interest costs.
Yeah, because again, you're, you're voting for those two questions, fire and public safety. You're not voting to retire debt that you would go out and borrow for those projects, if that makes sense. So that's why you couldn't, you'd have to use your own cash rather than doing an additional borrow.
So we could, we, the city could advance the money starting July first on this project.
You absolutely can. There, again, the IRS has some rules and so there's a resolution that the council would need to adopt at the time that it's approved by the voters that would allow you on and after that date to begin spending your own money toward the project and then when the bonds are issued, to reimburse yourself from the bond proceeds for those costs that you spent previously.
Does that affect anything on the issue, or the resolution we have in front of us? Okay. So in answer to your question, that would be one way to move this faster forward is to borrow from ourselves, get reimbursed when the bond issue is there. And that would expedite and maybe save us some money along the way.
And I see clients do that regularly. They start, they basically start that contractor, the, the design phase now. So that by the time we get to the actual election, they're, they're six months further down the path. That's a comfort level. If it doesn't pass.
You put the plans on the shelf and bring it back another year.
But you've spent, you've potentially spent that money out of reserves.
Yeah, I like the idea, Larry. I don't think we'd start before the, the election. We'd start the day after, though.
We have it all set to go.
But we could start the process of, of soliciting for architectural services and a bunch of other things on, on day two after the election is passed.
You could start that selection process, say, the first week in January to where you know, you've selected an architect or design consultant to where if it passes, you then engage them the next day. That, that would cut out that procurement, the time for the procurement of architectural services. Does that make sense?
I had a question, Daniel. At what point do they decide on the city's credit rating? And does it make a difference what our reserve is when they decide?
So the, the credit rating, what we decided at the time we actually go to sell the bonds.
So it'd be?
Could be six months, could be late next year, whenever that date is. The fact that there would be, if there were draws on that, the reserves to pay these costs, we would make noted that with the rating agencies that, well, there is money that is going to be reimbursed from our, from previously spent dollars. So we would, we would show them how reserves would be increased post issuance due to the reimbursement.
I, I wasn't thinking of just his idea, but just in general, would it be better if our reserves are a little better or not make much difference?
I don't know that it's going to make a material difference. The biggest factor at the moment to sell, when you sell a bond, is going to be the coverage level, which would be the, the, at what rates we're paying and what the annual debt service is compared to the total collections. Yes, the city's overall financial health does matter. I don't know that it matters to a degree that you should make decisions based purely on that, that credit rating. Because the difference between an A-plus or an A-flat isn't necessarily going to be a reason for you not to spend money out of reserves if there's something, a project that's warranted.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I, just, the fire training in the fire department, the estimated costs for those are pretty solid. Because I know we really went through the police department plans in detail, but I don't know that we went through those two facilities in detail. And then they brought it up as well. So would we plan on trying to break ground on both these facilities about this? Well, there's three, but all three kind of about the same time? We just don't really know yet?
I would say we just don't really know yet. I feel very comfortable about fire station number three because having gone through number four and looking at the design and whatnot, those costs are right in line. I've never done a fire training tower before, so we would have to dig in. There is a sheet that you may or may not have seen that chief put together on the fire training tower.
It's in the capital project spreadsheet, right? Yeah, I saw that.
You know, where he's broken down everything. So you may want to have a review of that.
So we feel pretty good about that?
I'm sorry?
We feel pretty good about that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It was based on, is chief still there?
Yeah, he's right here.
Yeah, that was based on a lot of visits to other training towers that you did too, wasn't it, Don? Both in-state and out-of-state? Good question, yeah. More questions? This is the time.
I don't have a question for these gentlemen. I just have a question more within our city budget. You know, the, funding other things, you know, with these. I mean, does anybody else have? I don't have any questions for them.
Yeah, so the one thing, and Carrie and I have talked about this, that for budget purposes, these projects are really kind of outside of that capital planning because the dollars, the dollars are outside of the budget, the projects are outside of the budget. Just, they may be included, but they're not getting paid out of your 2020 capital budget, if that makes sense.
Is it, maybe one more question, maybe two more questions? The issue, let's assume that this is the number that we finally end up going out for. So do we issue the full twenty-four three and then the project is finished and it comes in at twenty-one three?
So if there is money left over, the excess dollars would be used to pay down the debt.
So you, you'd call in the notes that are out there for?
So, yeah, so if you've got, we finished construction, there's a million dollars left unspent. We would then do a redemption notice and we would pay off a million dollars with the bonds at the next redemption date, so typically the next interest payment date.
Which would be six months, three months?
Yeah, it'd be every six months.
Six months.
So, yeah, so the money, the money can't go anywhere else. It's got to be used specifically for these projects. Or if it's unspent, it gets used to pay down the debt.
And so, so it still begs the question for me and, and Councilman O'Rourke mentioned it, if, if the voters approve the twenty-four three, that's our bond issue?
No. It's a not-to-exceed bond issue.
So when do we determine the dollars that go out to get issued?
After you've gone to bid and you get the contractor's bidding.
So today, today, based on these estimates, we would actually, our bond issue amount would be twenty-three million two thirty-three.
Because of?
Because you're, you're, you're not going, we would not be borrowing that contingency, that bottom line contingency of over a million dollars.
The contingency under bond issuance.
Correct.
And if that's the case, and the project is finished, so you issue the bonds of twenty-three two thirty-three as an example. And the project, when it's done, is less than that, you can retire the bonds early, but we still have to issue that full amount.
Now, we will issue whatever, you will get bids.
Yep.
We will take those bids and then we will factor in what, what required debt service reserve fund is needed, what issuance cost is, is related to that loan amount or to that project amount, and that's the number we will sell. So if there is no, if the contingency that you see above the line, the contractor's contingencies are zero, we're not going to sell twenty-three million. We're going to sell twenty-three minus that contingency amount.
So where does the money come from in the meantime to pay out our? So where does the money come from in the meantime to pay out our bills that accrue until we get to the bidding date?
Two ways. Either they allow you like net 180 days or net a year to pay them, or you pay it out of ca, city cash. At which point, those records would be, we would keep track of that. And when bonds are sold, we would repay, reimburse the city for those dollars spent.
So we should literally be prepared to have probably a couple million dollars, and I'm guessing here if we take the whole architectural fees, that's 1.4 million?
And I would imagine you're not going to spend all, some of that is not all going to be spent day one.
But you're going to spend some of the construction management in that interim.
Yeah. But the, once you start spending that money, that clock starts as to how soon we're going to be able to issue bonds. And it's not uncommon that the day after we close bonds, there's a bill or an invoice sitting at the trustee's office for accrued architectural or engineering fees. That is, that's accrued over that, during that timeframe.
And again, that six months is you either spend the money or you have a contract to spend the money. So it's not out of.
You have to have a commitment for it.
Right. So you can have a contract with your architect for $2 million and that satisfies the obvious six-month requirement. So you don't have to necessarily wait until, let's say, December of 2020 to close on the bond issue. You can close on it in June if you think between June and December, you'll have a contract to expend that.
Five percent.
And that's the camp many times I'm in. Get the money borrowed because then you're, you're, you're not at risk of the market rates going up and therefore you not having enough coverage to sell bonds. So if you know you're going to start spending it realistically, what we do is we borrow it, we set it with the trustee, you start paying those invoices, we would invest it in treasuries so that it's earning something while it's sitting there. And then once there's a contractor in place, they would provide us with a draw schedule for construction draws. We would then create a laddered portfolio of treasuries to invest it so that way we're, we're invest, we're getting the most bang for our buck. Every dollar that's earned on that project fund is either going to be used to, for the project or to pay debt service. So it's, we would be, the goal is to be the best stewards of taxpayer dollars. We're not going to let the money just sit there uninvested while we're paying interest on those dollars.
So having a schedule of the construction payout as a part of the architectural responsibility would be great because it would help structure that upfront.
Most of the time, we're not going to be at that point. Your architects will have an estimate, but until that construction manager or the NavHoltz, for example, whoever the contractor's going to be, they're the ones that are going to provide us. So what we do is we would invest a portion of it from now, let's say we issued bonds today, from now and when we expected that contract, the bids to award it to the contractor, we would invest for that period and then we would reinvest it based on the draw schedule at that point in time. That way we don't have money invested when you need to, to spend it.
More questions?
None of them.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a question. So we build these three facilities and we also, you know, whenever the time comes, we'll need to redesign and rebuild. I don't know if that's the way you want to put it. Fire station number one. And we've got that cost estimated and the number is so small, 3 point some million Do we have any plans on how we would fund that? Should it be part of a bond issue?
Not now. It's, it's too far out. That's probably a good four to five years out because you can't do it all at once. So what would happen is if, if you do the police station first, for example, now it really doesn't matter, but when you do the police station and the police move out of the building they're in now, then the first step the chief and I have been talking about is you got the building and you put it back so that you would have the administrative offices for fire on the second floor and you'll have the living quarters for the firefighters on the first floor. Then the next step after that may be the demolition of city hall or it may not be because you're going to have to do something with city hall at that point too. And we've looked at it briefly because you'd have to bring in Doug's as well, so you've got the two of them together. There is a piece of land that is between the proposed police station and the streets building now that we'll probably take it. We probably need, I think we said 14,000 square feet. And it's just, it's just an office building. So it's not fancy, you know, as far as having cells and all that kind of thing. It's just a straight building.
Is that one of the, this is one of these situations where, well, I don't know, we may not be toward the end of this bond. I guess it would have to be a separate bond because.
Not necessarily. There's a financing option too, isn't there?
Or can you do bond continuation if we would want to come back and fund another facility?
After five years?
So a couple ways of doing this. One way would be, we'd wait the bonds have been paid down. So we're five or six years into it, four or five years. We would have a call date. We would do a refunding of the existing bonds. We go to the voters, ask for their approval to refinance the existing bonds and issue new bonds. Together would pay off the old ones and fund your new project. The more complicated way to do it is you add another question to the ballot today and you be prepared to not issue those bonds until five years down the road or whatever that point in time is. An example of that would be Rogers. They did a huge capital project. They sell their bonds in mul, in at least two phases. So they sold bonds this year, they'll sell more bonds three or four years from now once they've spent the money. But the voters approved all of it today.
Right.
Granted, that does make it a little more complicated because then you're going to explain to the voters that we're asking for your approval for something we're going to do down the road. But that is how many times it is addressed if we know there's a project on the horizon.
Okay, I just know that's out there. We're going to have to fund it some way, somehow in the future, so.
That's right. The actual price came from chief because he's been looking at it for quite a few years now. And then we would have to make sure that we still have a functioning fire department as we add in more bays and improve the bays we have now because they're not up to legal snuff. They're not compliant because they're too old. And all that would have to be done in steps. It'll be a much larger period of time because you can't take the station out of service. At least that's the hope anyway. You've always been, you know, you've always got to have that capability to run fire and ambulance out of there. So it's a much trickier type of project to put together on a timeline. But we have looked at it, but it's, it's out there for now.
So wait, if we know that there is a need, potential need on the horizon, three, four, five years out, what we'll do is we'll take that into account when we structure the bonds with their redemption provisions. So a redemption provision is the op, opportunity, option to refinance at no cost. Well, not, shouldn't say no cost. Call your bonds at no penalty, then you would sell new bonds. So it could be five years, it could be anywhere, five to 10 years is the norm. If we know there's a project, instead of going to the 10 years, we, we ratchet it down to say, do it five, six-year redemption, first optional redemption. So that way we could then do a refinancing and issue new bonds at that time. Granted, that would require voter approval for that process.
Yeah, well, it's an easier.
But it's, it's an easier sell.
That's what I started to say.
You're not, just like every other, most of the other cities, this is your first time with this tax rate. Once the tax is in place, the, the norm is to, before it expires or bef, closer to that redemption date, come back, go to the voters, find new projects and extend.
And the key is to do what you say you're going to do.
Do what you're going to do.
Voters see that, then they have confidence and that's, you're going to follow.
Because then you're not asking for a tax increase, you're asking for us to continue and then do new projects that are, are needed for the city at arguably no incremental cost increase to the voters. That make sense?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, and again, not, not pre, so obviously when we get the new facilities built, the new, the new safety complex, I'll call it, I keep wanting to call it fire, uh, police department, but safety complex. You know, there's going to be a cost for, you know, turning on the lights every day, right? And then there's going to be additional personnel that are going to come on because we're going to continue to grow. I just want to know, we're fully confident that we're going to be able to fund the additional costs because number one's not going to go away. We're just going to add like another facility. I know we'll be closing this, we won't have the rent any longer, paying for the lights to come on here. We're going to, we're pretty close to pan, pan off our fire truck?
Yes.
Our streets building. So I just want to be confident that there's going to be cash flow in the future to sufficiently fund these, you know, new facilities.
Yes, Carrie and I have sat down and looked at it. You're absolutely right. Over the next two years, our debts, our, our current debt of $634,000 a year will be erased and that will go back into general funds because I don't see us doing anything else at that point. That will more than provide, you know, what we're going to need. The chief and I have talked on the police side. If, if you approve the two detectives that'll be in the budget this year, I think that'll hold you pretty square for two years on your head count. Yep. So we've, yes, we have taken it out and we have looked at it and we feel confident that we're able to afford it.
Yeah, and I don't know, but, but just some talking points in that regard because as we move forward on this, you're going to be, we're going to get questioned in all, all shapes and forms and I just want to be prepared, so.
Absolutely. Other questions?
What, just saying, throwing a number at the wall, you mentioned 14,000 square foot for a city hall.
Yes.
City administration building.
And also.
Which would house all of the.
CDS as well.
Departments you have other than fire and police. And if you throw a, a number at it at $500 a square foot, that's 7 million.
Yeah, but what we're being told, it won't be $5 a square foot.
$500 a square foot.
I'm sorry, $500 a square foot? No.
It won't be that?
No.
No, I understand.
No, all your building is just an office building.
If you take 44,000 at the 18.8 million, it's 427.
Right.
Okay. So, but just throwing the number out there.
No, I got it. Yep.
And it won't require all of the special glass and other features that are going to be in the police station, so.
No, no, it's just a, it's just a plain old office building.
So it begs the question then, should we add another, another question to this bond issue about moving forward with a new city administration building five years out? Not today.
I can't guarantee it'll be five years out. I know that we're planning to be in the building for at least six.
The concern that I have is we spend a lot of money to rehab the police station so it can be used for the dual purpose that is intended for the city administration.
No, 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 no. Fire administration. Fire administration goes on the second floor of where the police are today.
Okay.
And the living quarters for the firefighters will be on the first floor.
And where does the city hall staff go?
Right where it is now.
All right, isn't that where they're going to expand?
Eventually. But back to what we were talking about in the beginning, it doesn't all happen done on day one.
So.
That expansion of fire station.
City administration will remain where it is?
Until the very end.
Okay.
Because frankly, we need to get the, the infrastructure up and running and modernized before we need a new city hall. Tell me I'm wrong, but that's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
So can I add one point?
Sure.
If we go back to, this goes back a year and a half, two years ago, the reason we ended up at the place we're at today with the, with the public safety complex and the fire department, we originally were looking at a, a bucket for streets and a portion of funds that would have been available for administrative facilities. The decision at the time was to limit it to police and fire because of the group at the time felt that was the best chances of success. Start with police and fire. If those are successful, we'll come back and do city administrative facilities or city hall at a later date. I'm not saying that's the right approach, but that was, there was a lot of time, a lot of debate that got us to where we are today. Yeah, we didn't just, I say we, the mayor and the council and the work session, we got to hear, because it felt that was the best chance of success for these two projects specifically, not to muddy the water.
So we're only asking the voters to vote yes or vote no for a 1% sales tax. The length of time is based on the projects they approve. So if we set it out there five years into the future as the bond issue date, but ask approval for it today as a part of that 1%, does that make any sense?
Can you go back? Okay.
Keep in mind that when you do that, instead of you asking the voters today to approve 24 million, whatever the number, 24.3 million, you're going to be asking them to approve potentially like 31 million.
Well, probably 30 or under based on what the mayor has said about the square footage cost.
Let's say it's 250 a square foot. You're still at 3, 4 million dollars plus the incremental cost of reserve fund, et cetera. So that was the debate was, would the voters, does that number get high enough that it, it causes, it scares people? Because the city's never issued debt of this, of this term. Do we start it at something that's a little more manageable as opposed to asking for our wish list? When you guys say you want to do it, I'll do it. We do it, we do it regularly, but that was, that was, the heartburn was that it would get too much money for too long and the, and the fear, it's the unknown of how the voters would, would accept that.
I'm, I'm comfortable with where we are right now. I think we're asking for enough. And secondarily.
Granted, I love to sell bonds, so if you want to sell 100 million.
Well, a few years down the road, we may even be in a city, who knows? You can't, you want to have a crystal ball, we might be in a better financial position and might be able to go another avenue and not have to source funds, who knows?
So we're, we're currently, and Carrie and I have had this discussion multiple times as to, right now you've borrow, use amendment 78 to borrow for fire trucks or police cars. Depending where you are down the road, if taxes grow, keep in mind, there's going to be a 2020 census, so your share of the county tax could go up or down. I think the bet is that it's probably going to stay flat or go down because of your relative growth compared to everyone else in Benton County. So the budget's going to have to absorb that. But if there were incremental growth, you could use amendment 78 and say, do the, the city hall over a, a one-year pay period, use some reserves, use some amendment 78 dollars after this fire truck's paid off. So there are options other than necessarily having to put it on the ballot today.
Whatever happened to do one or two things right before you go on, before you get buried?
I'm not going to argue that. Hey, that's why we're, that's why we're where we are today. So, I mean, we started like a year and a half ago with a very extensive capital plan. And the, the decision matrix really was what capital do we need to fund out of bond, out of a bond issue to prevent us from maintaining our, our cash reserves or our operating reserves? And so the more you did without the bonds, it put a real strain on the city's fund balance. We were going to have to use, fund balance was going to be eaten into, to pay debt service. I think where we are now, it keeps the city at a level or projected level where you maintain liquidity. So in the event of a catastrophe, the city has cash to manage an emergency. It also keeps your rating to a level where your borrowing cost stays reasonable while funding a big chunk of your capital. So, that, that being said, you've, Carrie and the mayor have done a lot of work behind the scenes to kind of get us where, where we are today.
Yeah, I don't know how everybody else feels. I'm just kind of in the camp, we've really covered a lot of ground and we, this is supposed to have, you know, three readings anyway. I'm comfortable with going to a second one, just let the dust settle a little bit and if there's any additional conversation, have it at the second reading and then potentially vote on it then.
Okay, just keep in mind that if you were to amend it at a later date, we're starting over.
Yeah, I think. I got you.
I think from a timeline point of view, we're, our objective today is to find common ground that we would be moving forward as it is. And if we're not prepared to do that tonight is when we should be addressing that.
So is everybody comfortable then?
I, I would be comfortable with three full readings, quite frankly. Gives us, gives us plenty of flexibility in the timeline.
You're saying three, four, a reading tonight, November, and then a December reading?
Correct. Remembering that you've got a budget coming up too and that'll be, that may or may not may or may not be a long discussion because we are going to have some special meetings.
You could always, you could always accelerate that and read it twice next.
Yep.
Do two readings next week and next, in November and vote on it.
You could pass it at one meeting.
If that was the council's desire.
If it comes to that, correct. Yeah. But there are a number of things that are up in the air that.
Are there any other projects or other things that anyone wants to talk about possibly being part of that? Because we need to really know that tonight because that, if, there's been a lot of things talked about and we did mention some things, but that, if we could just get it kind of all at least out there tonight to know what we potentially could deal with, that would, that would serve a purpose tonight, I think.
I guess the, the big black cloud is really the water issue, water system issue. We haven't touched on that. It was raised, I think, at the last meeting very briefly as maybe an additional question to put on this bond issue. Until, until we make that decision, which is required next month, it's probably a question that's in the air, but I think it, it deserves maybe some thought.
I will tell you that if you try to put water on here, I will oppose it. We have spent a great deal of time going down and making sure that we feel comfortable with this. We are so far from deciding what we're doing with water, even if you, all of you decide to go with the Centerton thing. We haven't even talked about, well, what are the capital projects and where are the fundings? I mean, you've even told me that you can get loans cheaper through ANRC than you can through this process.
Oh, wow. First and foremost, the cheapest cost of borrowing for that water project is most likely ANRC.
Yeah.
Granted, it's got a lot of, you've got to make, check a lot of boxes to be eligible. It is not.
Have to go through a lot of hoops.
But they are, they're going to let you go a longer term, their reserve fund. And in full disclosure, we advise ANRC. I'm not, I don't, just want to make sure that disclosure.
But we're not even there.
But yeah, Steve and I have had a conversation with them last, at the municipal league. There's a lot of factors. The mayor and I talked last week that I would be very cautious about including anything to do with the water on this ballot because it affects such a few amount of, number of customers and the risk you run that it is perceived that the city, the large portion of the city is subsidizing a handful of customers. And what it does, potentially putting this ballot measure in jeopardy.
You know, I, I'll just say, I mean, you know, I'm very supportive of Centerton Water Purchase, but I'm not supportive of, just so you'll know, putting it on the bond proposal. We're a long way away from having anything even remotely ready to put together on this thing. And I think we've already, we, we're binding off a lot here. And, and besides, the, the purchase of Centerton Water Department's already in the city budget, you know, for 2019 anyway.
That's true.
So.
That, if you do proceed down that path, we will figure out how to pay for it at that point in time.
I'm totally comfortable with the way everything is right now, the way it's been presented by the administration, by the outside experts who've done 120 or 130 of these as opposed to some of my colleagues who have done zero of these. I think the best idea are the ones that have been presented tonight.
Okay. All righty. Shall we move on?
Please read it.
What's that?
Go ahead and read it.
No, I've already done it.
He did.
So this will go to the second reading?
This will go to the second reading, yes.
So do we need to take a formal action tonight?
Nope. Nope. Just like any other ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on to item B, which is a resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Christopher Estle to the Bella Vista Board of Zoning Adjustment for a three-year term expiring October the 1st, 2022. Somebody had asked how long he had been on. He's been on since February of this year. He replaced Harry, but he's known as Butch, Newby. Some of you may know Butch. Christopher's done a fine job up to this point. I, I'm very comfortable putting him on for three years. Anybody have any, any thoughts, discussion?
So moved. Second.
Excuse me. Roll call, vote.
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Thanks. The next resolution is approving amounts of liens to be certified to the Benton County Tax Collector against certain real properties as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances by the city of Bella Vista. At this point, I'll.
You need to, mayor, open a, a public hearing.
Yes, that's what I'm going to do.
Before further consideration.
Yep. So I'm going to move into a public hearing at this point. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none. I will close the public meeting. Discussion?
Mayor, could I just add, in light of the previous comments, she, unfortunately, she didn't stay to make her comments during the appropriate time. All of the invoices that the city provides, and Mr. Tapp is here, those numbers don't come out of thin air. Those are out-of-pocket city costs and can be verified. Doug's got all those receipts. We never put all those in the full packet. That's what the, the invoices that were sent to the particular property owners reflect. Mr. Burke pointed out and is correct, there is a scrivener's error as it relates to one of the amounts on the resolution itself. And Mr. Burke, which one was it you noticed? Which property?
It's the first property.
The Leekister Drive property?
Right, Lester Drive, right.
And what?
It just, it doesn't match the invoice. It's off by $40.
Okay. And so what, we will, we have the authority to, to make that modification by scrivener's error without there being any formal motions to amend. Just wanted to be reflected in the minutes that that was in fact the case.
Okay. Good catch, Steve. Thank you.
The, the individual that spoke earlier did plead guilty to code violations and a failure to appear in court here this, earlier this month. So she has taken responsibility for that. She did attempt to make a payment, what she thought was just, in fact, she had the check of $50 and wrote that it was going to be payment in full, trying to get us to accept that. We rejected that because that was not payment in full. So that in fact did occur. But nevertheless, the amounts that were listed in your agenda were the amounts actually expended related to the cleanups and all the notices went out. I'm sure Mr. Tapp can give you more information on the details of that.
Okay.
So is it still possible for Mrs. Smith to avoid the lien by paying off the, the bill in full?
Well, what happens is these, this gets certified to the tax collector. It gets added to the next year's property tax bill. So she could pay it then. If she pays it before that, we'll release it and, and she won't have to pay it. But it's going to have to be paid, one way or the other. As soon as she pays it, the sooner she pays it, the sooner it goes away. Now, the, the tax collector can add an assessment, can add an amount on there for collection. She, she possibly could avoid that if she would have already gone ahead and paid it. But once you all approve this lien, then she's probably going to get stuck with a little extra cost from the tax collector if she wants to go that route.
I think it's important to note that on the, the Smith property, the lady who spoke tonight, $330 of the 352 are the actual cost of the cleanup that was assessed to that property. So it's the lion's share of the total bill. They had three mailings certified, 695 apiece, 22-something total. That's kind of how it is. That's the balance, so.
Is Mr. Tapp still here?
Yeah.
Mr. Tapp, can you talk to the, the level of effort required to clean out a culvert and how that can get to $330?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think, I think when we have these public hearings, we do need to come prepared to address the specifics of each one of the cases that we're looking at. So I, I think that's the purpose of a public hearing. So I'd like for us to be prepared for that in, in the future.
Sure. Mayor, council.
When this particular case, when a culvert gets clogged, we get calls from the neighbors because it's overflow, overflow in the street and causing damage to their property. We send a notice. We ask them to clean it out. They don't comply. We follow up with visits. Still not compliance. This went on for a while. And her neighbors frequently come to city council. They're not here tonight, but they're here typically every week. And so we had to hire somebody to go out and clean it out. And that was his cost.
And so what, what, so we hire, it's not a work done by city staff?
No.
It's somebody we call and they're a licensed what?
This guy owns a rotor ruder bit.
Right.
That he fires up and runs under there and cleans it out.
Right.
I'm not sure that he's a licensed landscaper, but.
Okay.
He owns the equipment to get the job done.
And then does the city have any way of knowing if we're engaging this contractor that their rates are fair?
Well, I believe Cheyenne got called two or three folks to get pricing. And this is not a com, this is not a piece of equipment that a lot of people have. We only found a couple of people that owned one.
Right. An auger.
Yes, sir.
And so in this case, was the length of the culvert no more than the length of the driveway? And they had to push the auger through the, the width of the driveway?
Correct.
And, and their fee for that is 300?
I believe, I believe that's correct.
Well, there's, there's a mobilization cost, a demobilization. You're going to pay them from portal to portal along with the, the actual time of cleaning it.
Right.
Their, their transport costs to and from may be much less per hour than the actual work, but you'll, you'll pay.
This one required a little bit of extra work to actually get to, it was so clogged up at the entrances to the culvert, he had to.
Right.
Do a little work before he could get his equipment in there.
I, I think in, in cases like this, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that we have somebody that unhappy with, with the process. And I think the city does have a responsibility to know that there, again, that there's rigor in the process, that there's fairness in the, in the pricing, and that when we're asked if that's fair pricing, that we can respond with full confidence that this is the fair cost for that work. So I think if we don't have an answer to that and are not sure, that kind of thing, it only festers more of this kind of discontentment.
We, I can tell you that whenever we procure these types of services, we procure them like we would any city service. The city's having to pay for this. So, and call, in, in these smaller projects, of course, it doesn't require full competitive bidding, but it does require to go out and get some, some quotes. And they call around and get quotes in order to do that. And, and that's the kind of thing that, that has been hap, that has happened on these particular circumstances. I, I would just tell you this. And, and this lady certainly has every right to come and speak to you and say whatever she desires to say, and she has her opinion. She had, she had an opinion tonight. She had the very same opinion with me in court. She had the very same opinion with the judge in person. In fact, she demanded to know why the judge was fining her for not showing up in court and making her pay more for that than the cost of the actual citation. And we explained to her that was a violation of state law. And then she agreed to do that. She's had the very same attitude, no matter how understanding or who, what level of person she's dealt with. Unfortunately, and I'm not speaking individually of her, I know Doug's people can tell you this, we deal with unfortunately, some very incorrigible people who cause problems for the neighbors around here and we have to do something. And, and they show up in court and they're very mad. They show up at council meetings, they're very mad. And that's just the nature of what your code enforcement people, when they go out there and you all want them to do that, that's what they're facing when they go out there by themselves.
You bet.
And try to work with people.
Yep.
That's it.
That's right. And, and to your point too, I mean, you know, if, if resident doesn't end up paying the cost, the city incurs it. So we're not looking to, you just, you know, go out willy-nilly. We're wanting to try to get the best price for the service that we can.
We've got a lot of trips and a lot of hours in this one.
That's right.
This was not a moneymaker.
Yep. And Mr. Kelly, you make really good points, and I, I agree with all of those 100%. And all, all of those factors really also drive to the city's responsibility for making sure that our charges are fair, that we're 100% confident we've been through the process.
It's not fair to overcharge people either, at all. Absolutely not.
All righty. Thanks, Doug. Okay, anybody else on this?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Next resolution is amending Rule 2, Special Meetings of the Rules of Order and Procedure of the Bella Vista City Council. Councilmember Flynn?
Yeah, we discussed this a little bit at the work session, and I just wanted to point out, we did change it per Larry Williams' suggestion that two council people can call a meeting. So it's really putting it back the way it was before, make it easy, easier for us to have special meetings. I think it's important for us to be flexible and be able to do things when we need to. So that's why I, I thought the more restricted way we had it before, which I probably voted for, was not as prudent as this new way.
Okay. Any thoughts, discussion? Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Again, roll call, vote. Councilmember Wozniak?
No.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Kerry, 5-1.
Thank you. The next is a resolution accepting a storm cleanup grant for the city trail system in the amount of $25,000 from the Walton Family Foundation and amending the 2019 city budget to recognize the revenue and authorize the expenditure. This is the cost of cleaning up the trails from the August wind event that we had. As I mentioned at, at the work session, the POA is actually responsible for the maintenance. And in this particular instance, one of the Walton grandsons actually went out on the trails and saw the amount of damage. And he said that we would, or that the foundation would then pay the city. So we have the money. But in essence, the POA has already paid the contractor. So once you approve this, then we will cut a check and we will pay the POA. But any questions on it at all? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Thank you. In your work session packet, there was a resolution establishing the, the solid waste rates for next year. Those rates have been, have been established, but there's a format that Republic is looking for from us per a request from their auditors. So Mr. Kelly has asked that he can have time so that he can research it to make sure that this is something that they can ask us to do. So we have pulled it from October and we'll bring it to you in November in whatever format it'll end up being. So we move to the next resolution then is approving a grant agreement with the Walton Family Foundation in the amount of $4,908,000 for the construction of two Razorback Greenway Extension Projects, including the new Mercy Way Bridge and a Blowing Springs to Metfield Greenfield, sorry, Greenway connection. The Mercy Way Bridge is 1.3 million. And that was the missing piece that we needed to make this a viable project for the city. The total cost is 6.1. I think that's correct, Eric. And we have a 80-20 grant from the feds. And then we received some additional grants through our friends in regional planning. And then this was the final plug that we needed, which greatly reduces the, the financial exposure in this project to the city. The remaining 3.6 is to extend the Razorback from Blowing Springs up to Metfield. Someone had asked when the POA board was going to consider this, or had they done it already? I spoke to Mr. Judson, and they intend to discuss it at their December meeting. He did not want to put it on their, on their agendas in the middle of their, of their quest for an increase in the assessment. Any discussion at all? Motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mayor Christie, just, just one quick one before, before we go there. So to that point, if the POA doesn't approve the land use, then.
Then we'll return the money.
Okay.
Yep.
We, so we would be accepting the grant prior to the POA determining whether or not the land is available to run the project from Blowing Springs to.
No, we're not accepting the money into the city yet. All we're doing is approving a grant agreement.
Okay.
For.
Approving a grant agreement. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say about, there was a, I'm going to call a public meeting about this Blowing Springs to Metfield Trail. And, yeah, I was there in Riordan Hall, actually, I apologize, it was at Cooper in the cafeteria. And it was absolutely full of residents from Bella Vista. And the support was really phenomenal.
Overwhelming.
I think there were maybe two people that got up and spoke out against it. And that got, that's all almost that was reported in the Weekly Vista, which I was really disappointed that that was the coverage. And these people were really into it. And the reason for the meeting was for people to actually make suggestions, recommendations for improvement or to make it as safe as they possibly could. But there was a lot of excitement over this, and I think it's going to be really well received. And, you know, I think Bella Vista, at the end of the day, we're, you know, it, it's just going to be a really nice addition to our city. just going to be a really nice addition to our city, so.
I agree. Okay, anybody else?
Is there any merit in, in showing the dollar amounts in this resolution? You've got the total here, and then you just kind of lumped together the Greenway Projects, the Mercy Way Bridge, Blowing Springs-
If you look in your package, Larry, you'll see that in the actual agreement, it's broken out.
I understand it's in the packet, but I, my question is whether it's appropriate to put it in parentheses or somehow in here as well so that we don't have to go back and look at the supporting data every time we want to look at what's been allocated. It's in the resolution that says 2.4 million or, let's see, what's the number?
Doug, did you want to add something?
I would just add that when we met with the Walton Family Foundation, that's the way he recommended the wording.
Okay, so this, this is the way the family foundation would like to see it? Okay.
As, as a, as a lump sum, no breakout at all? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
The last resolution of the evening is accepting the financial audit report presented by the Landmark PLC for the year ending December 31st, 2018. Again, for those of you at home, this is the first time that the city has actually had an audit done by an outside firm. In past years, it has always been the legislative audit out of Little Rock. However, this too was part of our planning for the bond, again, on the advice of Raymond James, that we needed to have a professional outside audit that has had experience with other cities, and Landmark does Rogers. We did however go to bid, and we did everything properly to make sure that we were compliant. As I mentioned in the work session, there was one minor finding, and it's a minor finding that every smaller city has, including ourselves, going right back to the first legislative audit, is the separation of duties on the finance side.